I'd like to call to order the town council regular session at 7:30. And the date is Monday, August 15th. Would you please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Could we have the roll call, please, Dale?
Council President Whaley?
Present.
Council Vice President McAtee?
Here.
Councilwoman Eddy?
Here.
Councilwoman Fogarty?
Here.
Councilman O'Neil?
Here.
All members present.
Thank you. We have the approval of the minutes of previous meetings. We have the work session July 25th, 2011.
I move approval of the work session and regular session of the minutes of July 25th.
Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed abstention, motion carries 5-0-0. We also have regular session July 25th, 2011.
I move approval.
Second.
We have motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed abstention, motion carries 5-0-0. Would anyone care for anything to be removed from the consent agenda?
I move that we take new business item A off the consent agenda and refer it back to the traffic commission.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed abstention, motion carries. Can we have a motion for the consent agenda?
I move approval of the consent agenda as amended.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed abstention, motion carries 5-0-0. Which brings us to licenses. We have a resolution granting a victualing license to Jen Kier Incorporated doing business as Subway, 99 Fortin Road, Kingston, Rhode Island, subject to approval by the fire chief. Application by Paul Jencarelli, president, 36 Tom Harvey Road, Westerly. And this is a new license. Do we have anyone to speak to Subway? If you could come to the mic and introduce yourself, please. Welcome.
You're welcome. Thank you. Paul Jencarelli, president.
And if you could just tell us a little bit about your business?
Yeah, we're going to operate a Subway at the URI campus. And I've been a Subway franchisee for about eight or nine years in Connecticut. And there's an opportunity to buy, I sold my existing one in Connecticut, and I'm going to purchase this one in the end of August and operate the Subway there as a franchisee.
Great. Do we have any questions at the table? Jim?
Is that the same Subway that we have on Tower Hill? Is that the single-digit name, just Subway? Sandwich shop that we have in Tower Hill in Wakefield also?
They're a different franchise. It's a different franchise outlet. So this is going to be a different unit.
The same parent somewhere. Same parent somewhere.
Yes, sir. Subway is the parent company. DAI is the name of the, owns the franchise. And we're, I'm a licensed franchisee to operate just at that one unit on Fortin Road.
Okay. And lastly, maybe I'm spelling your name wrong, but are you the former Tim Hortons family? I mean, the coffee shop family?
No, it wasn't related to Tim Hortons. No, it was Bessie and was the family.
Okay, Bessie.
Before that, yes, sir.
But not the same family?
No, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions here at the table? And what will your hours of operation? What will they be?
7:00 AM to about 10:00 PM.
Mm-hmm. Great. Kathy?
Is Subway based out of Connecticut? Is that their home base?
The headquarters are Milford, Connecticut.
Milford, Connecticut. I was surprised to read that. I thought that they were more of a national thing, but it's a local New England company.
Yeah, it is. It's nice. It is nice.
It's nice to read. Big Drive or something like that. I just was looking at that recently.
Strong brand, lot of stores.
You've beat now McDonald's, right? With the number of stores? Or is that, what's that?
I think in the United States and Canada, they beat the number of units. Internationally, they're not as big, but they're trying to catch up.
Yeah. You're getting there.
Using people like us to beat their numbers.
I make a motion to approve license item six, A, excuse me?
Second.
Thank you.
Yeah, we have motion and a second. Ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed abstention, motion carries 5-0-0. Paul, we wish you the best of luck.
Thank you. Now, was there another permit? There was a wastewater permit they told me, too? Or was it just a victualing?
It's approved administratively.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a nice night.
Good luck.
Okay. Our second license tonight is a resolution granting a holiday sales license to Johnny Barkin Bakery LLC, 35 South County Commons Way, Unit D4, Wakefield, Rhode Island, subject to approval by the fire chief and communications superintendent, and issuance of a certificate of occupancy. Application by Alexandra Miller, 242 Laurel Ridge Lane, North Kingston, Rhode Island. And this is a new license. Welcome.
Hi, I am Alexandra Miller, the owner. All right, so this is a retail dog bakery, dog-centric location, dog-friendly. We encourage dogs to come in. I'll be baking fresh, all-natural dog treats onsite and also offering a whole host of dog accessories, collars, leashes, crates, you name it.
Okay. Questions here at the table?
Is this going to be where the psychic kitty used to be?
It's not. It's actually in the location that Oop used to occupy, next to the Right Click Computer Store.
Ah, great.
Yes.
And you will just be making dog biscuits?
Yes.
Right? Not dog food?
Not dog food.
Okay.
Little more complex to get into the dog food world.
Polly has her Charlie, who is a gem.
I have a dog. Will be there.
Very nice.
Further questions here at the table? Okay, can we have a motion?
I move approval of license C.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed abstention, motion carries 5-0-0. Best of luck, Alexandra.
Thank you.
Which brings us to comments from interested citizens. Welcome, Helen?
Good evening. I've just come from making this announcement at the fourth of the, or the third of the four talks that are given at the White Church above the URI Bay Campus. The head of the War College spoke, Professor Mara. So I'll read this. It's all related. Oh, this is a press release that I took around this morning. "Ten Years After: The Legacy of 9/11." Professor Timothy D. Hoyt, Naval War College Strategy and Policy Department, and the holder of the John Nicholas Brown Chair for Counterterrorism Studies, will welcome guests and the audience in considering 9/11. Dr. Hoyt was in the Pentagon on 9/11, serving the Department of Defense. He moved to the War College in 2002. His appointment to the John Nicholas Brown Chair took place two weeks ago. This is his first public appearance as its holder. I hope you all know who John Nicholas Brown was. Engaged speakers are Robert M. Laffey, the only teacher of Middle Eastern Studies at the high school level in Rhode Island, when he spoke at the Washington Trust Bancorp's program the Tempest Fugit gave on 9/11 in 2002. Mr. Laffey has been on the faculty at Suffolk University these 10 years. Second, Jane Lyle Malcolm, who spoke at Tempest Fugit's program on 9/1102 at Providence's Central Congregational Church. With members of St. John's Episcopal Church in Barrington, she drove down to Ground Zero on Tuesdays, well into the year 2002. The work of remembrance and service continues. Their Concerts of Bach announced back in June, and I say of Bach only, which is interesting. Their Concerts of Bach announced back in June inspired this program. And the third one is Rod Driver of Richmond, four times candidate for Congress and 10-year veteran, 1987 to the year 2010 of the Rhode Island Legislature at the suggestion of Professor Hoyt. Mr. Driver joined a Tempest Fugit program on the Middle East Western in February 2002 with the Kingston Free Library. Bibliography will be supplied. The compiler of choices, the public affairs curriculum published by Brown University's Watson Institute for International Studies, is our consultant. The Brown Chair was endowed in 1979 at the death of Mr. Brown by his three children. Mr. Brown, born in New York in 1901, enlisted as an apprentice seaman in World War I. I think that's something.
Pretty significant.
He was 17 and had a lot of money. He served Brown University in numerous roles and was a founder of the Providence Preservation Society among numerous public appointments. He named his post as Assistant Navy Secretary for Air in 1947 to '49 under President Truman as his most rewarding public role. Living in Newport as well as Providence, he never missed a graduation at the War College. The Browns entertained all our presidents on their Newport visits in Newport at Harbor Court, the Charles McKim Chateau built by his mother when he was a boy. Mr. Brown's daughter, Mrs. Edwin Fisher, and Captain Nicholas Brown, United States Navy retired, will be with us, as well as Dr. Fisher and Mrs. Brown. The late J. Carter Brown directed the National Gallery of Art for a long and distinguished term, and the event will take place Sunday afternoon, September 11, 7:30 PM, at the Veterans of Foreign War, Post 916155 Main Street, Wakefield. You're all invited. Well, thank you.
Further comments from interested citizens? Any comments here at the table?
Thank you. I'm going to assume now that it's August 15th, that the resolution that the town council passed back in June and then again in July to first meet with the school committee and then our general assembly members, I'm going to assume that no dates have been set and that there was not a positive response. So, along those lines, I'm most concerned, and I don't understand why they refused. I said at the time I put the resolution in that the talk was not going to be about the contract. We knew what was put into the budget. The issue, as I said then, was the $4 to $5 million of tax payer money that we would have to find, basically because of the pension issue. And tonight, just to prove that what I said is in fact true, we received at the last minute, so no one's had a chance to review it, the school committee's pro forma budget. And my goodness, right on the money, $5,32,954. I don't know why they didn't want to meet with us. Even if everything in the world goes right, if there's some pension reform, some federal money, we're still going to be $2.5, $3 million. And basically, frankly, I expect our community is expecting no tax increase. I don't know where we're going to find the money. I think we needed to talk with these folks. We needed to see how they see things. Should a school be closed? What kind of layoffs are you talking? This is an awful lot of money, even if a lot of things go right for them. And I really think that we needed to start now to hear their pain, their priority of cuts, hear our pain and whether or not we're going to be able to get any money from the general assembly, from the federal government, let alone our taxpayers. And I know our taxpayers are looking for relief. And of that $5 million, according to the state treasurer's office, the number for pensions alone for the school is $2.81 million, just for the school alone. Almost another $1.003 for the town. That's just pension without reform, $4.1 million, goodness gracious. So I am just embarrassed that we couldn't sit down with them because we just needed to have a frank talk. And that's really a shame that we can't zero in sooner than later because to wait for the general assembly in October, November to maybe come up with a decision, we're once again going to be right at the end of our timetable to put a budget together, which will put incredible pressure, basically, on us. Forget the school committee, it's going to come down in our laps. Then after the school committee apparently turned down our request to meet with them, the general assembly apparently has not responded. Apparently, a couple of folks by phone have inquired, is there going to be a meeting? But I just can't understand this one at all because the town manager's office has put out back in May, on May 12th, the pension cost to this town alone of the $4.1 million. Our general assembly members should be here at every meeting to figure out how we're going to address this, and they're not. I don't understand it, why they refused to meet with us. And a couple other things going on, that is of incredible importance. There was a Senate Bill 1006, Sub A, on disability pensions, which Treasurer Raimondo warned against passing, went right through the Senate, 32 to 3, with Siznowski, and I'm going to pick on Sheehan, too, because both of them voting for it. Teachers arbitration bill, you've seen, 20 to 17. Again, Senators Sheehan and Siznowski voted for it, and that kept it in the positive column had they voted against it. Like all the cities and towns but two opposed this measure, they voted for it. A couple other bills, Senate Bill 533 on zoning ordinances. I personally knew nothing about this. I saw nothing in front of the town council. That, again, and fortunately, these bills died in committee. These would have increased zoning density, would have included wetlands in yield plans, would have maximized buildable lot size. If you had 40,000 square feet, if you had a 10-acre lot, you'd still be allowed to build on it. And I think of the two or three decades of our planning boards and town councils that have worked so hard to make this town as attractive as it is. Where, where are our general assembly members letting us know what's happening? This is an embarrassment, absolute embarrassment. So I don't know why we're not being informed of these threats. And I guess the question becomes, who are the general assembly members representing? And why such spite and hatred for South Kingston and our neighboring towns? Why won't they listen to us? Why won't they meet with us? But this is an embarrassment because this is serious money coming up, and we can't be the only ones representing the South Kingston taxpayers. Thank you.
Jim, I can only respond that the school committee said that they were not available. I'll take that one first. And the message that was sent was that they would have Dr. Kristen Stringfellow get together some dates and pass them on. So, we haven't heard anything yet, Steve, from any dates that the school committee's available?
No. The only correspondence that we received was the indication that they weren't available for the dates that had been suggested, and that if the council wished, they could attend the meeting that was held last Tuesday in the open forum. That was the only correspondence that we received.
Do you think we should follow up with any possible dates in the future? Actually, they have a school committee meeting, I think, tomorrow night. So hopefully, maybe if we could get the message to them, maybe there's some dates that they can come forward with, maybe tomorrow.
If the council wants to give me available dates, we'll forward those to the school committee.
And I certainly appreciate that. I mean, I'd like everyone to know that we offered the school committee six dates, and then when they turned it down, we offered the same to the general assembly members. I mean, I don't care if we meet with four of them, just the majority of the seven. I mean, this is unbelievable. We are going to be in a mad panic come November and December, not knowing how to handle a budget. Every line item everywhere is going to be affected because of this. We really need to get some kind of sequence of where the most difficulty will be, a priority list, too, options, all of it. I don't understand this. I just don't. So if there's any blame to go around, believe me, between the school committee and general assembly members, to leave this council just out here on a limb to wait, to wait for whatever's going to happen to happen is, I just find it appalling and embarrassing that this community can't work together. Why am I fighting for my taxpayers when I wind up apparently fighting my own general assembly members? We need to get together on this, and they've refused to do this? Again, who are they representing? This is just beyond obnoxious.
Yeah. Well, I'm not sure it was a blatant refusal. I'm not really sure, you know, all of the reasons that were given for the legislators, Jim. But if people can kind of pick a week, I know that basically all of August was booked for us being away on vacation. So do we want to look at offering the first week in September? That's Labor Day?
I would like to say that I went to the meeting on Tuesday and found it very interesting.
The goal-setting session.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that meeting on Tuesday was, they gave us an hour to listen to their presentation that said in the...
You could have asked any question.
Well, it said it was specific to the uniform code. It was not about the budget, not about the contract, anything else. And they specifically, that one-hour invitation to us was on the new uniform code published by the State Department of Education. So that's nuts.
Yeah, but as you know as well as I do, it's interesting to meet them and chat with them in between.
We try.
Anyway, yeah, I thought it was well worthwhile.
All right.
Sorry, Ella.
Do we want to offer? Yes.
I'd just like to say that, as we all know, the school committee has been tied up with very serious negotiations with the teachers' union. So I, I think we have to give them some leeway on that count, and now that hopefully things will be resolved tomorrow, and we can get on to the next step.
And...
They've been working hard.
And what leeway would we like to give our general assembly members?
All right, let's just settle with the school committee first, and then we'll move on to that, Jim. Kathy?
And I agree with what Carol is saying, that, you know, you know what just transpired with the contract. And I know it was a rotational type of meetings that the school committee had with the negotiations. So I think that whoever was available, when you set these dates in July, I believe I said that I thought that, you know, it's not a best time with scheduling as far as vacations, that this could be an issue. So to say that they refused, they were in contract negotiations and probably had their own personal lives to, planned vacations and so forth. So I think I stated that upfront, that that could be a difficult thing. I don't think they're refusing, and by saying that, it's appalling and disgraceful. I think that they've been very, very busy. So I will cut them some slack on that regards. The general assembly, I don't know what to say regarding those, but I haven't really seen any of the general assembly members to see what their schedules have looked like. But I have bumped into several of the school committee people, and they asked about it and said that with their scheduling and with the rotational process, that it was a problem for them. And Polly did mention to me that she went to that meeting and found it very interesting last week, that questions could be asked. You know, that was, that was an opportunity to maybe go. There was, it was a clear invite. I could not attend. It was my daughter's birthday that evening.
Okay. So back to, I'm willing to ask the school committee if we can be a correspondence, that I'll make myself available. I'm looking at my September calendar, and rather than give them dates, can we ask them for maybe two or three possible dates if they can discuss at their, their meeting?
Sure.
Okay?
Okay. We will communicate with them.
Thank you. All right. And as far as the legislators go, you know, I don't know the reasons why, Jim. I know that those were really some strong words, that you used, the word hate. I know that. I always try to tell my...
Spite was also used. Spite and hatred.
Was it hatred and spite?
Spite and hatred. Yep, that's how they're treating us.
Yep.
All right.
I mean, think about this. The state is in this mess, and some of these folks have been on, up at the general assembly for decades. We need some relationship and dialogue, and there's none. And I don't know how any of you cannot support me on this. And also...
We don't support your choice of words.
Well, that's too bad, but now, now we're at the end of the line with our budgets.
Right. So...
We definitely want to meet.
Can we somehow also get some kind of a memo out for possible dates for the legislators? I know that Stephen Allen, and I think, believe you also attended, Jim, the Gina Raimondo presentation on the pension reform. And I know that the legislators are still waiting for, you know, finalization on some kind of a product there, so...
But they need to know what we're facing. Steve has already put out a memo back in May. What we're facing on this, they have to understand that this is an incredible disaster tax-wise. This isn't something you wait until it's over. And also, by the way, speaking of the general assembly, I also want to thank school committeeman Rick Angeli for his letter, also slamming the conflict of interest of the local senators on their vote on the biting arbitration bill. So many thanks to school committeeman Angeli for his letter to the editor.
Okay. So is the preference to pick some more dates for the legislators and send something out?
Do you want me to try to get dates with legislators as well in September?
That's what, that's what I'm asking here. Do we want to isolate some dates, or do we want to...
September, though. We're not doing August, right?
Right. I'm looking September.
No, because I'll be away next week, and Polly will be away.
Right. So I'm looking...
Why don't we let them, since you see how they respond to us? Why don't we hear what dates they feel comfortable with meeting with us? Maybe that's the way to do it. We've given everybody plenty of opportunities. Let's hear what dates they have, and then we can respond to them.
I think that's more difficult for the legislators, seeing that they're not, you know, getting together like a school committee. So I think it would be helpful if we picked maybe two or three more dates for the legislators. For a second, third week in September, what's your preference? Fourth week?
I say the second week, the week of the sixth, seventh, eighth, ninth?
That's Labor Day on the 5th.
Well, not the 5th, obviously.
Okay. Six, seventh, eighth? Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday? Or...
Fine. The following week.
Or the following week? Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday? On Thursday, there is an economic, on the 15th, Economic Development Committee with Ed Maisy at the Holiday Inn. So, Steve, for the legislators, we could offer a sixth, seventh, and eighth, or 13 and 14? First couple of weeks in September.
And what about the sixth?
Six, seventh, eighth, 13 and 14?
Yes.
Right.
For the legislators?
Right.
And what will we do for the school committee?
The school committee will get our dates.
The school committee...
They can take the dates that the legislators...
Did say that she would get back to, back to us with some dates that the school committee was available. So if we could put that request out, that'd be great. Okay? Further comments from interested citizens?
I've got one more. Steve, in our packet, I don't know if last week, week before, we received a letter regarding United Water. Can you...
Regarding, I'm sorry.
Did you see the United Water letter?
Are you talking about from the union?
Yes, from the union, yep. Regarding testing United Water. I mean, any, anything connected, obviously, with our United Water, anything we should be concerned about?
I don't see that there's anything that we should be concerned about. That is testing of water and conditioning of water, I believe, in New Jersey. It does not involve the water in Rhode Island.
Okay. So no response necessary?
No.
All right. Thank you.
Recognize that, you know, United is a very large company and has got labor organizations that they are not in sync with, and that's one of the unions that I believe is still looking for a contract with them at that water division. However, the claims that have been made are very serious as far as the internal correspondence that's been released. But certainly, that's far different than what we have with the United Water that's in Wakefield.
Thank you.
Any other comments from interested citizens? Any comments here at the table?
I attended as well, I attended the Bike Path Phase III opening, ribbon cutting, as well as Polly and Jim, and it was very nice. Governor Chafee was there, as well as other officials, Sue Siznowski. And it really was a nice event, attended very well, and hopefully soon we'll be driving right to Narragansett Pier from the train station. So literally, you could get off the train and ride a bike to the beach, and through South Kingston and stop all along the way. It was very nice.
And then I just have a few dates, you know. Thank you, Mrs. Farrell, the September 11th, September Fugit. And then we also have on September 18th, the Village Green Ribbon Cutting at 4:00. And just a reminder to town council, on September 15th, we have the Economic Development Committee And just a reminder to Town Council, on September 15th, we have the Economic Development Committee and Ed Maisie at the Holiday Inn, 6 to 8. I believe it's Narragansett Town Council and South Kingstown. Just some upcoming dates. Okay? All right, we ready to move on to Town Manager's report?
I have nothing to report on this evening, other than the reports that have been provided over the past three weeks of these questions. I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you. Town Solicitors Report. Okay. Which brings us to appointments. We have three? Yep?
Yes, we have three new appointments to the Partnership for Prevention Commission. That's Betty Murphy, who will serve a three-year term to expire June of 2014. Carol A. Pilkington, a three-year term to expire June of 2014. And Marie J. Waldeck, to serve a three-year term, which will expire June 2014.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries 500. New business item A, we've already voted on, which brings us to new business item C. This is a resolution authorizing an award of bid to Coastal International Trucks LLC, 17 O'Keefe Lane, Warwick, Rhode Island, for a 2012 International 7400 Dump Truck with Heel, Dump Body, and Viking Snowplow in an amount not to exceed $136,070, including trade-in, and is further described in a memorandum from the Public Services Director to the Town Manager dated August 9, 2011, and entitled "Bid Recommendation: 40,000 GVW Dump Truck with Snowplow."
Recommendation is to award to the lowest qualified bidder. As noted, there was five submissions. However, the, that which was listed as the lowest did not meet the specifications provided by the department, so we went to the second low bidder that met all terms and conditions, and that's what's presented on your agenda this evening.
Any questions?
I move approval of new business item C.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries 500. New business item D, a resolution authorizing an award of bid to Liberty Chevrolet, 90 Bay Street Road, Wakefield, Massachusetts, for a new 2012 Chevrolet 3500 four-wheel-drive pickup with snowplow, in an amount not to exceed $24,958, including trade-in, and is further described in memorandum from the Public Services Director to the Town Manager dated August 9, 2011, and entitled "Bid Recommendation: Pickup Truck with Snowplow."
Recommendation again is to award to the lowest qualified bidder, Liberty Chevrolet, as presented in John Shock's memorandum of August 9.
Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve new business item D.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries 500. New business item E is a resolution authorizing an amendment to an award of contract to GZA 300 Broadway, Providence, Rhode Island, for consulting engineering services necessary for construction engineering services associated with the reconstruction of Factory Pond Dam from an amount not to exceed $74,050 to an amount not to exceed $85,843.75, and is further described in a memorandum dated August 2, 2011, from the Public Services Director to the Town Manager, entitled "Engineering Services Contract Amendment for Factory Pond Dam."
As John's memorandum indicated, that we needed to make the adjustment because at the original award with GZA, the resident inspection costs were not, were not included in the initial award. I would say that the overall cost of the dam installation has come in at $262,964, which is below what the carrying estimate was at about $290,000. And of that cost, the cost to the town through the enterprise fund itself is about $222,600. The remaining dollars came from Fish and Wildlife or other federal sources to allow for the installation of the spillway. I also would like to give special recognition to John Shock and his administrative officers for being able to take care of a very complicated project in a record time to be able to get that dam completely reconstructed after the failure that occurred with the March 2010 rain that we received. The entire dam had to be completely reconstructed. We now have a state-of-the-art earthen dam in place with a, with a emergency spillway, as well as a fish ladder that will allow for the whale's wife to be able to come in from the ocean into the, into the Factory Pond. I think it's a win-win situation for, for the community, and certainly it bodes well for the Engineering Division for the work that they were able to accomplish in getting this thing done in record time. So I would like to just publicly thank them for the work effort that they put into this.
A big thank you from the Town Council as well.
Approval of new business item E?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries 500. Last item on the agenda is new business item F. This is a resolution that the South Kingstown Town Council, in an effort to ensure that the South Kingstown Partnership for Prevention complies with all town rules and regulations regarding boards and commissions, approves the following language to serve as the South Kingstown Partnership for Prevention charge. This commission is charged to lead the town of South Kingstown in substance abuse prevention activities by using a variety of strategies and resources in partnership with multiple, specifically required sectors of community to design and control a multitude of prevention programs. The South Kingstown Partnership for Prevention Commission members will also be involved in the broader defined South Kingstown Partnership for Prevention Coalition that is designed in accordance with guidelines outlined in both state and federal substance abuse and prevention grant funding programs. The South Kingstown Partnership for Prevention is structured to receive funding forms numerous sources included, those at the local, state, and federal government levels, as well as other private for-profit and nonprofit trusts and foundations. The commission is to be comprised of seven voting members serving, three-year terms in various ex-officio representatives, including one law enforcement, one Parks and Recreation, one school, two student, and two town council representatives.
I think we've discussed this. The objective here is to redefine the scope of services for the Partnership for Prevention, and to reduce its, its scale from 15 members down to seven voting members, at the same time recognizing the importance of the ex-officio members that can participate as full members with the seven-member-appointed committee, yet would have no rights or responsibility to count toward forum or to vote specifically on issues. The council's earlier reappointment of three individuals now gives us a membership of six appointed members of the commission, so we're still one down. Hopefully, what we can do is to determine those core sector that are deficient in terms of being represented on the commission at this point, and attempt to get individuals that would be willing to be considered for, for appointment to that seventh position. I want to also note that this in no way does away with the, the broad-based community effort as far as the coalition is concerned, where the coalition is a membership of any person who's interested in terms of assisting, establishing what the, what the objectives and programs would be in terms of meeting the needs in our community for substance abuse, whether it be at the high school level, middle school level, or at the college level. So these programs are really developed through use of the grant funds, but the, the program activities themselves really come through the grassroots, with the community members suggesting how best to address different ideas, based on statistical information being available on where trouble areas exist that need to be addressed. So we think this is in the best interest of trying to provide greater focus for the commission itself by the streamlining. It also provides us with an ability to have a quorum of four, rather than a quorum of eight, required to be able to conduct the, the business of this important public body.
Great.
Make a motion to approve new business item F?
Second.
We have motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries 500. Any further comments before we adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn?
Ellen, excuse me.
All right, Jim.
Possible, Steve, that we could have a council visit to the new factory dam, or can we get some personal passes and IDs to go out and look?
I think we should bring you there tonight, Jim.
Thank you, all right. We'll get a pass then.
Is that a second, Jim, for the adjournment?
Second.
We have motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries 500. We're adjourned, thank you.